Okay, we're live. Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Review Session for July 13, 2020, 10:00 a.m. session. No public testimony will be taken during this review session. Do not call in. The following cases will be adjourned. 863-48BZ, 25919 Union Turnpike, Queens. 2191BZ, 2407-2417 Linden Boulevard, Brooklyn. 7204BZ, 14154 Northern Boulevard, Queens. 2016-4149BZ, 508-508-500-508 Van Nest Avenue, The Bronx. And item number 5, 2019-82A, 430 St. Mark's Place Staten Island. Future dates will be not applicants will be notified of future dates. The following cases are set for decision. Item number 6, 3399BZ, 630 Fifth Avenue, Manhattan.
Okay, so this is a an executive session, so please don't call in. We do notice that we have two people in the waiting room and and one of them actually has a case. It's tomorrow, Mr. Duarte's other case. Is that correct? I just heard his benefit.
Mr. Duarte's case is this afternoon.
Okay, this afternoon. Okay, so happy to have him waiting, but he shouldn't be in the waiting room. And we're not going to discuss the adjourned cases. We'll be assigning a date for the adjourned cases and we'll let them know going forward or in, you know, in another week or so or a few days. So, right, so decisions 3399. Is that the one you just read?
3399BZ, 630 Fifth Avenue, Manhattan.
Okay, the requested corrections to operating hours and the areas of the space were made in the statement of fact. So I didn't see any other issues. I just want to by just kind of a waving or show of hands. Does any other commissioner have any comments on this before we go to decision? No? Okay, so everyone's shaking their head no, even though no one can see that on the video. So I would like to then make a motion to grant, and there are no conditions.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Rotley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Item number 7, 7299BZ, 1633 Broadway, Manhattan.
Okay, and similar to the previous one, the requested corrections were made and massage licenses provided. We never actually got a resolution from the community board, but this was there was a little bit of back and forth in emails from them. But this was submitted in November, so they had time to hear this if they wanted to. And we understand that they often waive their decisions on these PCEs. Anybody have any, any of the commissioners have comments? Just shake your nod your head whenever if you don't want. Okay. So, okay, so there's nobody expressing an interest to speak. I'm asking because everyone's muted and I have to ask them to unmute, etc., etc. Okay, so then I would like to make a motion to grant this. No conditions.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Rotley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Next item is number 8, 17514BZ, 1162 Broadway, Manhattan.
Okay. All right. The requested revisions were made and we have the updated certificate of appropriateness from Landmarks Commission. It's dated May 21, 20. And I don't believe there were any other open issues. Seeker is acceptable. So unless someone puts their hand up or or waves their hand at me, I'll assume no comments from Commissioner staff. Tracy, you're okay with this? Okay, yeah, okay. So then I'd like to make a motion to grant no conditions.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Rotley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Okay, next decision, item number 9, 2018-201A, 46 Kissel Avenue, Staten Island.
Sorry, rolling. Here we go. No submission was required on this one and all is in order as far as I've been able to tell. We have the EP sign off. Right, and that was it. Any anybody want to speak on this? Or if you speak, you can speak when you're voting also if you want to do that. Okay. So there are no conditions that I am noticing unless someone finds that there are conditions. So I would like to make a motion to grant.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Rotley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Next item, item number 10, 2019-93BZ, 3203 Bedford Avenue, Brooklyn.
Okay, this one is definitely a conditional situation. Hold on one second. Here we go. Corrections were made as requested to the drawings which were submitted on April 24 for the so there were like those corrections were submitted like right after our hearing. My was on the 21st. The restrictive declaration committing to install a fence along a side lot line on neighbor's request was corrected and recorded kind of immediately. So I was surprised to see it was recorded in April. And there remain outstanding ECB violations that must be corrected and the fines paid. But at the last hearing, we agreed to vote on the application, but to give them a very short lease, a leash of one year from the vote date to allow for payment of the fines and demonstration of compliance with the terms of the grant. So for our council's benefit, it would be a leash that starts as of the vote date as opposed to the resolution date because they're supposed to be clearing up the violations, right? And paying paying the fines and obviously continuing to show compliance with the terms of the grant. We were waiting for the final EAS. I don't know if we have that.
Yes, we received it.
Yes, we received it. I reviewed it and it looks acceptable.
Okay, so then in terms of conditions, we were, and I do want to hear from commissioners about this case. So we were they, we wanted them to provide walls with STC rating of 50 and windows with an STC rating of 32 minimum. The restrictive declaration with respect to the fencing along the property line at the request of the neighbor, that should be mentioned in our conditions. And and also since it was recorded, you can even refer to this, the recording number, the CRFN number. They must provide street trees and landscaping as shown on the drawings, on the approved drawings and a refrigerated trash storage room in the cellar. And there's to be absolutely no catering or banquet hall services provided on the property. And the condition, this is a question actually to Commissioner Sheta, because before there had been a condition that the structure be reviewed by structural engineer and by DOB. If that's still something we want to maintain, then that would be a condition. So Commissioner Sheta, is that something you?
Yes, I would like to keep that.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to just kind of go quickly around the room. Commissioner Shonda, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I do not have anything more. I'm satisfied with what you have read.
Okay, Commissioner Otley Brown?
I have no additional conditions to be added.
Okay, and Commissioner Sheta, anything, anything further?
No, just the the structural review. This is, this is something that I expressed concerns regarding before. And I would like them to take this seriously and have the DOB look at it. In addition to that, I'm sympathetic with them because the review process took quite a bit time. But that was a result of an act from their side when they laid that change of use for the basement sections after the previous grant. I would commend them this time to realize that 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 there is a new sheriff in the town. Please, no more games.
Okay, thanks. Not so old, not so new, right? It's been, it's been years already.
You know, you get you, when you see a place like this, it's a place of worship. Thanks God, it's all the places of worship are closed for probably four months now. But when you see a place like this and people are not able to use it, it's it, you get upset. And you know, I'm sure even the like the congregants get more upset than us. So I would, again, I would commend the board or whoever responsible for that. Please to from now and forward, please comply.
Thank you. Okay, Commissioner Shabeta?
What I want to say is that I think council handled this job, this case pretty well. I think it was very responsive. And it certainly did a 360 in the time that it's been for us.
Yes, and I just want to add to that, that we didn't really have the cooperation of the owners until their council really, I think, laid down the law with them and said, "Look, you're not going to be able to move forward unless you comply with the direction of the board." And then they jumped, they jumped to it. So I think it's been a great improvement. So with that, with those conditions that I read, I'd like to make a motion to grant for a period of one year starting as of the vote date.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Rotley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Okay, and you know, and just in terms of this one year, it's effectively what we're doing is we're sort of institutionalizing a compliance hearing at the end of the year. If they can show compliance with the terms of the grant, then the, then we would extend it for either a longer term or make it a permanent variance, you know, it sort of depends on how they are behaving. Ted, did you have a comment? No, 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 okay. It looks like your hand was up, that's why. Okay, all right.
Item number 11, 2019, 165BZ, 1375 East 26th Street, Brooklyn.
Okay, as far as I know, we only had requested corrections to the elevation designations, which I see were made. Commissioner Sheta, are you okay with that? You have to unmute yourself. I can't hear you. You're muted.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, I did look at him and they fixed it that. Yes, thank you.
Okay, anybody else have comments on this? All right then, so I'd like to make a motion to grant again, no conditions.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Rotley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Item number 12, 2019-267BZ, 16598 Basely Boulevard, Queens.
Okay. We had just simply wanted information about ADA access and fire egress, which was provided in the plan set as requested. And it was submitted, it was kind of difficult to follow the ADA drawing, not the ADA drawings, the egress drawings. So at at project manager, E-banks choose request, they were corrected again. So now I think they're much clearer. And so I thank the applicant for making those corrections. Okay, any other, anybody else want to say anything on this? Okay, so I'd like to make a motion to grant no conditions.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye, sorry.
Commissioner? Commissioner Rotley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Asheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Okay. Item number 13 and 14, these are continued hearings, 551-37BZ, 23302 Northern Boulevard, Queens. And item number 14, 33478BZ, 23320 Northern Boulevard.
Okay, and just a reminder, this is a review session, so no testimony is accepted during a review session. And at the end of the review session, because I see we have people in the waiting room and listening, then we switch to the public hearing where for the continued hearings and new cases, we will take testimony. But we won't take testimony on decision cases that are already decided, so, or on adjournments. Okay, so and if you don't hear your case being discussed in the review session in the morning session, it means it's being heard in either the afternoon session or tomorrow, in which case you should be checking the calendar that's on the BSA website, see what time your hearing is going to be held. Okay, so 551-37BZ.
23302 Northern Boulevard and 334-33478BZ, 233-20 Northern Boulevard, Queens.
Okay, I think this application was much improved. The statement of facts goes carefully through the board history and clarifies what is being requested with this application, the uses on the site and the relationship to the site next door, as well as a carefully compiled demonstration of compliance with terms of the 2018 short term grant. So as not to repeat, though, there's a reason why we're seeing this with a better application now. So I'm making a comment on that. So as not to repeat what occurred at the initial hearing where the materials were universally viewed by the commissioners as unacceptable and not really ready for hearing. I have to beg applicants, that's everyone listening who's an applicant, not to submit materials they haven't proofread for clarity, correctness and completeness, and for project managers, so this is asking staff, please, to actually, I don't know if you can hear, there's a plane flying over here. One second. Loisy. Okay, and also for project managers, please feel free to reject materials during your initial reviews that are not acceptable. You don't need to go through, for example, the statement of facts and say on paragraph this on page one, it's all a mess, fix it, just send it back and say the materials have not been proofread, it's impossible to tell what you're asking for, do over. And just save yourselves a lot of time because this was not an acceptable initial submission. Okay, this is a like general comment, not just directed at this submission. In terms of this specific submission, there is a business operation plan on page six of the statement of facts that should be incorporated into the resolution. That's for our council to note. There is a date error in the statement of facts and the board history and compliance chart with respect to the 2018 grant. It states the grant was in 2019 and expired more or less the same day. They have to correct that and the cover letter. But meanwhile, the cover letter had the correct date, so that's also telling me sloppy proofreading. It's a different person who did the cover letter than wrote the materials. So that's an internal, let's say, applicant issue. Okay, I, there was supposed to be a landscaping plan. I didn't see one, maybe someone else did. And the site plan was with the adjacent site was supposed to be ghosted in. We had talked about that at the last hearing, which was what was done for the prior application so that you can see the relationship between the two sites. I don't really understand why this site is being treated as if it were two zoning lots. It's not. There's no written response to our question about access from this site to the adjacent site or about how the area between the building and the adjacent site is used. That's something we discussed at the last hearing. The site plan T-002 shows no parking striping in that adjacent area, while the circulation plan shows parking in the adjacent area. So that just tells me that there's some confusion about it or or whatever. However, I do have to say the site looks good. I'm glad to see that the improvements were made as requested. And we just need the details that I'm describing cleaned up in the submission. And our council also should be aware that the approved use groups are use group 16 auto repair and use group nine auto sales. That's not particularly clear in the general submission. So I just wanted to point that out to our council. Okay, so I'll go around the room. Commissioner Shonda, comment?
Thank you. During my site visit in in June, yeah, latter part of June, I did go to the both the sites, this site, both of them are in much better condition. This site has been in good condition. Lot of improvements have been made. However, as we know, there aren't any new businesses operating from this to site, from this site. But I did notice some vehicles without license plates that were parked on the site. So my question to the applicant is who is then parking these vehicles without license plate? I think I know, but I would like the applicant to respond to that question. Also, the way.
They were parked on the site or on the sidewalk?
They were parked on the site, within the site.
Okay.
But since there isn't any business operating there, these vehicles belong to another operation.
Right.
And the way the vehicles, and since, as you mentioned, the vehicle parking area has not been striped, the way the vehicles were parked, they were parked right up to the front of the lot line, which is not what our drawings show. And I think to ensure that if that is going to be the new format, because those are going to be in future where the used car show will or will be on display. I think learning from prior such cases, it would be best if we required them to put bollards with chains in front along the lot line so that the vehicles don't keep encroaching onto the sidewalk.
Okay. Thanks. That's it?
Yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Otley Brown?
The only additional comment I have is given the history that we've had with this applicant from the first time around when they had this unlicensed sign, the pylon sign to now, that if we do have used car sales, in addition to striping the area that those things are going to, the cars are going to be parked in, we should have written into the resolution a condition that there's a maximum number of cars for sale so that we don't have that overflow that Commissioner Shonda is suggesting might happen, that she is suggesting bollards for. But I think we should belt and suspender them in as many ways as possible.
So so belt and suspenders usually includes a restrictive declaration, like the resolution is a belt and the deck is a, is the suspenders.
That would be a good idea.
Okay. Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. The only concern I have is regarding drainage. I'm not sure if we've sent this drawing, the site plan with the dry well to the DOB so they can take a look at. If Tracy can just educate me on that. But I am looking at the drains and and I see that there is one three by three catch basin. I wanted to like add to the other box at the beginning of the pipes that these are like floor drains. And I'm not sure if if DOB hasn't looked at this, I would like to get some sort of a survey for the pavement. My understanding is it's done. So we want to make sure that the ground slopes are like built correctly so they can divert runoff from from property lines to.
Is it D O B or D E P?
D E P.
Oh, D E P. D E P. Yeah, that was.
I'm sorry, I meant D E P, not D O P.
Okay, so say that again, you want to make sure that the ground slopes are not causing flooding?
Are not causing flooding. This is number one, or pounding. This is number two, or causing the runoff to go to adjacent property, especially the one that's to the west.
Okay.
If if D E P looked at this and they are okay with it, just notate the floor drain on the drawing and you're good to go. If not, give me an as-built for the ground elevations to make sure that the grades, existing grades, help the runoff go to the final destination, which is the dry well or the dry wells. If if D E P didn't look at it, I want to make sure that it's covered.
Okay. So normally, well, I can have Tracy comment on this, but normally D E P doesn't look at this particular type of question. Tracy, you want to comment on this? And I mean.
Right, I don't think this application was subject to seeker. I'd have to check. But it didn't have any D E P review in terms of that.
Right.
Or otherwise that I, that I was aware of.
So so we could, of course, ask D E P to look at this, but unless they have elevations, they're not going to know either, right? So, you know, just showing the dry wells doesn't tell them whether it's sloping the right way. So without that information, it's kind of nothing for them to review. So maybe.
They provided, they provided some calculations on the same drawing.
Okay.
I'm not sure what are these calculations based on. I don't see like any testing done for like the permeation test or the percolation test. Nothing is there, just some like very rough discharge estimates. Who they mentioned the dry well, the two dry wells. But this is not my only concern. The the big concern is if if you look at the drains that they provided, one, two, three pieces of pipes, three floor drains and one catch basin. And these are located at the south western section of the site. If the existing grades around these buildings are not perfect to act like pipes and take all the runoff to the southern western section where the dry wells are, it's this site's going to be a mess and it's gonna like dump like most of the runoff to the adjacent property, which we don't want to see in the future.
Right. Okay, thanks. And Commissioner Shabeta?
Thank you, Chair. I think the, I think the applicant was responsive to our comments from the last hearing. I think it also was responsive to what was stated by the community board. I felt the pictures are helpful. The site seems like it's very clean. It's cleaned up. It seems in good shape. And the pottery isn't my favorite, but the landscaping is. But again, I think this is, this case came a long way.
Agreed. Okay, I'm just looking at the comments to the community board. Community board said a motion was made to approve the applications with the following conditions. Signs posted in the businesses explaining the street parking rules, no parking on sidewalks, and all prior conditions remain. So mostly they were concerned about parking and then picking up the other conditions that are in the resolution. Okay. All right, so.
All right, done?
Yeah.
Okay, so this concludes the public review session for July 13, 2020, 10:00 a.m. So we will now commence with the public hearing, July 13, 2020, 10:00 a.m. Please only call in during your application. So the following application.
Oh, wait, no, no, no. I'm sorry. Hold on a second. We were only talking about the first case. Those were.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, yeah. Now we have to talk. You called them together, that's fine, but but we have to distinguish. The notes are, my notes are different for the two sites.
Oh, I'm sorry. So I'm sorry, ladies and gentlemen, we're still on the public review session.
Yeah, so maybe call the second site separately.
Okay, so the second site is 33478BZ, 233-20 Northern Boulevard, Queens. I apologize.
Okay, no, sorry, I didn't realize that the comments were different. I mean, they obviously are because the sites are different. So so but so as was the previous application, the information, the statement of facts and plans had been corrected and clarified. Compliance with the conditions of the 2018 grant was provided, although the photos are not associated with a key plan. It's a much larger site than the other one, so is. It's a much like larger site than the other one. So it's actually, um, difficult to place where they're taken from. I really would ask always that when you submit photos, please submit a key plan because otherwise we have to guess by like, oh, look, there's a trash can. Uh, that must be the trash can that's in the upper left-hand corner, you know, that kind of thing. It's really very hard to find it. Uh, the photos standing for compliance with maintaining the sidewalk in good repair show a cracked and broken sidewalk. Um, this, the sidewalk needs to be properly repaired and replaced. The biz printout shows that the E C B violations have been paid. There were many, and so they paid them since. So I thank them for doing that. And then again, um, for our council, there's an operations plan on page five of the statement of facts, which should be incorporated into the resolution. Tho- those were my comments on this. I don't know if people have different comments for this one. Um, Commissioner Shonda?
So, um, based on a site visit, uh, as I mentioned, um, this is in very good condition. And I think one of the concerns that was raised at the last hearing, that a lot of the vehicles that were for sale were parked on the sidewalk, I did not notice that. Pretty much all the va- all the vehicles that were parked on the sidewalk did have a license plate. And I, and when I was there, I did notice that there was an entrance to the tra- to a trail, to the alecking pond right next to this facility. So I think the probably people come there, park, and they, they take the trail. So, uh, that's just my speculation, uh, observation. Um, with regards to the plan, uh, the applicant revised, submitted a revised plan on July 9th, which shows a total count of 38 spaces. Just to be consistent with the, uh, with the statement of fact, I, I think the numbering of the vehicles should be clear because we were very clear, we were very particular that 13 number, 13 spaces be set aside for auto repair and 25 spaces be set aside for auto sales. And this goes back to what Commissioner Ratley Brown had said for the earlier hearing, that we should have a number very much fixed, uh, for the number of auto sales, uh, so that we are very clear what we are granting. So, uh, the plan, the last plan that was submitted shows a total of one to 38, whereas the previous plan showed one to 13 for the sa- uh, for the repair and one to 25 for, uh, auto repair, which was easy to understand.
Stop, slow down. You just said repair twice.
I'm sorry.
13.
Okay, 13 spaces for repair was shown in the previous plan and 25 for auto sales. And I would like the revised plan, uh, them to revise the plan and show it accordingly. So this way we know where the auto repair vehicles are going to be located and where the auto sales vehicles are going to be located and they're numerically shown and it's consistent with the statement of fact.
Okay, that's, that's good. Okay.
And also, uh, parking number 26 for the revised plan, yeah, that is in front of the auto repair building. Based on the last approval, uh, plan, I think it was specifically shown as parking for customers, uh, for auto repair vehicle or so. That's not shown it here. And I think just to be very clear as to what part of the lot is being used for what purposes, we probably should have that very clearly identified like we had at the last hearing.
So maybe, maybe there should be sort of a symbol. These 13, you write, they put, you know, 13 repair and 25 sales. They actually.
Yeah, 13 R, 25 S.
Yeah, something like that. Yeah. And then, and then have it in a legend so we know what the R and the S stands for 10 years from now when we look at this again or something. Right, okay, good. Anything else?
Thank you. No.
That's it? Commissioner Ratley Brown?
I was happy to see the photographs. It showed that the side street was clear of the cars parked in the roadway and that there were only cars parked along the sidewalk. But I also, uh, feel there should be some restrictive declaration here that limits the number of cars to what they are indicating they want to sell so that this way we don't have an overflow into that side street.
Okay, great. So in terms of the restrictive declarations that are being discussed in this hearing and in this case in the prior one, applicant's counsel should prepare restrictive deck and, um, and this, the, the sort of template for it is fairly standard and then submit it as soon as possible to our counsel so we can, there can be a turnaround. Of course, we're going to discuss this at the hearing, but just so they understand how this works. Okay, um, commi- thank you. Anything else? No? Okay. Uh, Commissioner Sheta?
I have nothing further on this case. Thank you.
And Commissioner Shibetta?
Nothing further. Thank you, Chair.
All right. Now we're done.
All right, thank you. Okay, so now, um, that concludes the public review session for July 13th, 10 a.m. We will now commence with the public hearing for July 13th, 10 a.m. session. So we were all, we are only discussing the continued, special order calendar continued hearing cases, which is 55137 BZ 23302 Northern Boulevard, Queens, Queens and 33478 BZ 23320 Northern Boulevard, Queens.
Okay, so we have Elise in the waiting room. There's also, I'm noting John Ronan is in the waiting room. Maybe it's the only way he's able to dial in or something, but, um, I don't believe we're hearing his case this morning, right? Tony?
John's, John's case is on the set at 2 o'clock.
Right, so, uh, Mr. Ronan, if you're able to hear this on YouTube, um, we're not hearing your case until 2 P M. So, um, yeah, just saying you shouldn't be in the waiting room. Um, good morning, Ms. Foladair. State your name.
Um, Elise Foladair from Eric Palatnik P C on behalf of the applicant.
Okay, please proceed. Oh, actually.
I'm going to sway you in.
Yeah.
My internet's going a little unstable, so just in case I log out. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do. Thank you very much.
Okay, that's for both cases.
Um, I think we should call them separately because I want to point out again, and I can expand on this if necessary, but these are separate zoning lots. They happen to be the same owner. That's why we were hearing them at the same time, but they've never been merged. They have separate operators. They've always had separate operators and they've always been under separate V S A cases.
Okay.
And we can.
Madam Chair?
Yeah.
All right, so 55137 BZ 23302 Northern Boulevard.
Right, okay.
So that is why I didn't discuss, or we didn't discuss the, how they're one zoning lot because they're separate zoning lots. You're not supposed to access them from each other's sites. They're supposed to be totally separate. But we can do something showing, uh, ghosting the property next to each other. We can expand upon that, but they're not supposed to be looked at together. They're supposed to be.
Okay, so the reason they were ghost, we talked about this that way the last time, is because it was clear the last time that cars were coming into this site and then traveling into the adjacent site because there are garage doors on the adjacent site, and that's actually what was going on. So we were really confused.
We fenced around both properties, so there shouldn't be access to either, you should only be able to go to one site or the other site.
Okay, so that was kind of what I wanted, maybe because we're talking about a restrictive deck. Maybe that's a thing that we should add to the restrictive deck. So make a note.
Certainly can.
That these are to be used separately and there's no access from this site to the adjacent site. I'm getting an agreement, uh, a visual agreement from Commissioner Ratley Brown on this one.
So the restrictive deck will ha- can have the maximum number of cars for sale for each separate, because they both have a showroom and a repair, um, use on them and they can separate that. And the restrictive deck can say that each is a separate zoning lot and they will not be accessed from each other.
Correct, but you're going to, since it's a separate site, you'll have a separate restrictive deck.
Yeah.
And the only reference to the adjoining property is that no access from the adjoining property to this property is permitted under the terms of the grant, right? Okay.
Um, and then in terms of who's parking without license plates, I'd like to, uh, discuss that with the owner before I make any, because this happened quick from review session to now. So I will find out what's happening with that. And then with the, uh, dry well elevation plan, I wanted to remind the board that we were showing compliance similar to a hearing you had earlier this morning. This is a year later and we're trying to show compliance with the previously approved, um, conditions and that it was previously approved like that. And we did want to show the dry wells and show you the situation, but going to the deep, it, it isn't under seeker review. So going to the D E P would be a huge, it's not something that's currently under the review of D E P. We do have, but these plans are approved by D E P and we did try to provide the dry well plan, so.
Okay, I, I think what, um, if, if there were actually a D E P review somewhere that you can produce for us, where they actually did look at the slope of the site and so on, then, I mean, and it's an old one, they looked at it before. The, I think the concern is about the ponding and the runoff. And we, we've had this discussion before about Alepon Park, right? Where there was ponding in the street, um, and issues about the effect of it on the park and, and so on. So, um, if you have something that was previously reviewed by the E P, that would speed it up. If not, then, um, um, the architect should be able to, from the survey, provide information about the elevations on, in the, on the streets, on the, on the paving. And that way you would be able to see that the elevations are higher and slope down to the drains, then you're, then you're done.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm not sure that, uh, oh, and then you said landscaping. You wanted a more clear plan of that.
Yeah. Got a question? Go ahead.
Yes, uh, I raised this concern about the dry well, not from vacuum. I wasn't sure that it was approved by D O B, D E B, but if it was, please give me a drawing identical to this. And if they stamped it approve, it's their baby. It's not mine. But when we, we the B S A, when we look at a drawing that's full of contradictions, like E G, the height of the dry well, on the calcs it says four feet. On the drawing, it says five. On the call out, it says four. When you look at the discharge calculations, it says Q, which is the discharge equal C I A. Proposed the area, this is the area of the site is this, and then Q equal, none of the terms is defined. And then all of the sudden Q is 333.1 square feet. Oh my God. The discharge is measured by a square feet. As far as I understand, and I did a study like three years hydrology and, and fluid mechanics, this charge is volume per time. It's not square feet. So whoever prepared this drawing and stamped it, it, it might be a typo, I hope. But if this drawing was stamped before and it's like that, I'm sorry, if somebody approved it, like I said, it says baby. But if I look at something like that and I see it, I have to like be concerned. And that's why I asked for the grades. Consider adding some more, I don't know, drains, floor drains. We, we want to make sure that the adjacent property to the west is not going to be flooded. In addition, I need, when I look at something, I need to see something that makes sense. Unless they change the measurements of the discharge and I'm not aware of that.
Okay, I will ask the architect to do a grade plan or to provide you with a grade plan.
And fix the calculations, please.
And fix, yep, and I will show him the video.
Thank you.
Um, I'm not sure there's any more comments for this application. Let me know.
I don't think so. Um, hold on, just taking notes. Okay. Uh, no. So, but you did hear about the restrictive deck. So we have that restrictive deck for the number of parking spaces and then also for the, um, adjacency in relationship to the adjacency. Okay? All right, so how much time would you need to work on this? With the restrictive deck, you should turn it around as quickly as possible. So our councils had a chance to review it and you send it to council, right? Not just.
Yeah. The, this, um, owner really wants this obviously to be finished because he's waited, you know, he got this grant a year ago. So however little amount of time you'll give me is what I will take. But I understand that the, uh, restrictive debt has to be reviewed first, so.
Right. Commissioner Shonda had a question.
Yeah.
You're muted, Commissioner. Unmute.
Oh, sorry. I just want to make sure also this plan is consistent with what we discussed for the next application, 334, which is how we number the parking spaces for, uh, designate the number of, uh, identify the parking spaces that are for repair, identify the number of parking spaces for auto sales by the, using the R and the S and show it in the legend, please.
Okay, thank you. And I actually asked the architect to change it to do the full amount of parking spaces, but I'll ask to go back because I thought it was confusing to figure out how many total spaces were on the site. But, well, we can go back to this, but I'm saying I just was, got confused when I was.
I, I, I think you can achieve both. You can show the number of vehicles, uh, space, parking spaces for repair and for sale. And then in the legend, you can say the total number of parking spaces is this and the breakdown. 12 are whatever the number is and X S.
Yep.
Which equals sales and repairs. So that way you cover, you show it in the legend and it's clear and it runs consistent with the statement.
But you can also, I just want to add to that, if you have, what does this one have? Um, what's the number of parking spaces on this site? It's not 38, it's something else. Anyway, if, you could have one through 25 spaces, just for argument's sake, if that's the total number on the site. I don't, it's not rolling up. And, and so, and you could put an, an R next to, uh, the first 10 and an S next to the remaining 15. And even though you're counting totaling 25, and in the legend, it will say R represents rent, uh, repair, S represents sales total, and then repeat, say there are 10 of the, 15 of them.
That works.
And it's all of this, okay?
Yep.
Okay, and then.
I'm fine with that.
Okay, and then the other thing that I forget to reiterate is Commissioner Shonda's recommendation, which I think is a good one, of the bollards and a chain, so we don't have cars rolling over on to essentially their, their hoods onto the sidewalk.
So you want that added to the plans?
Yes.
I just, I do want to point out though that this, this owner has worked hard to, he spent a lot of money updating the site, so I'll.
Right, but, okay, what's that have to do with adding bollards and chains so that it doesn't park on the sidewalk? Don't forget the history of the site.
Yeah, understood, but I'm just saying that rather than keeping, holding it up and holding it up and holding it up, you can see that he's worked really hard on this site.
Well, we're not holding, don't forget, started off with a site that was non-compliant, so we're not holding anything up. We're trying to get the site into shape, right?
I'm just, I want to recognize that, you know, this person did, you know, spend the past year like going to D O B, improving a site, getting permits, you know? He was a new owner. He wasn't the old person.
Okay, but this is the way it goes about ownership. You buy a building, the building's a wreck, you got to fix the building. The last owner says you bought it as is, have a nice day, right? That's how it is in business. So we, what we're trying to do is prevent the, the problems that we saw happening on this site from happening again.
I totally understand. I, I just, he can't get in a tenant right now and that's, I'm just trying to.
I, I understood, but, okay, but, yeah, I understand.
Okay.
Okay.
So, um, do I call this out so you can get public review?
Yes.
33, 55137 BZ 23302 Northern Boulevard, Queens.
So this is, uh, yeah, so please call in if you're interested in speaking on this application. So we'll give it a full minute to check whether, because we have so much time delay on this. Okay, all right then. So let's move on to the next case. Nobody has called into the waiting room.
33478 BZ 23320 Northern Boulevard, Queens. Remember, this is a public hearing, only call in. Oh, you're actually there, Elise, sorry.
Um, Elise Foladair from Eric Palatnik P C, I guess, swearing in.
Yes. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions?
I do.
Please proceed.
As previously discussed, we can provide a restrictive declaration regarding access and, and parking spaces and maximum amount of parking spaces. We can ghost in the site as you asked for. There was also another, what other question was there on this?
Um. You want the same, um, design on the plans, right? Repair, sales, notation?
Yes, well, the same count, the same way of show, exactly, of designating which spaces are repaired, which are. Yes, well, the same count, the same way of sho- exactly, of designating which spaces are repair and which are sales. There was actually one space in front of the repair area that not clear what it was going to be used for. So just to clarify, the uses of all 38 spaces, okay, the same way.
Right, and then, uh, um, I think, and then Commissioner, oh, that's the only other one. No, Commissioner Shonda had a question about parking space number 26?
Yeah, that, that's what I.
Oh, okay.
Needs to be clarified, and, um, oh, the bro- the broken sidewalk. So that's a responsibility of all property owners to repair the sidewalks. So the only photo we saw was of the curb cut being restored, which is very good, and it looks good. However, the photographs revealed badly broken sidewalks. That's the responsibility of the property owner, and mm-hmm. You know, if he doesn't do it now, he gets a violation from D O T or Department of, I'm not sure who gives them, D O T or Department of Sanitation. Anyway, somebody does. Um, and if you don't do it, they fix it, or should. Right, so that he has to do that now, okay? Um, perfect time to pour concrete. All right. Okay. All right, so then we move to the, um.
Public. 33478 BZ 233-20 Northern Boulevard, Queens.
Okay, so while we're waiting to see if anyone wants to call in, um, uh, we're talking about is kind of an early turnaround, but we are going to need to see turnaround restrictive deck, so we're going to need a at least a, a few weeks of that. I'm not exactly sure how quickly we can put this on for, um, the next hearing, but, um, we'll, we'll try to, um, make it soon.
Yeah, and I, thank you, and I appreciate that a lot. And as I said before, he just really, you know, needs to get a tenant in there to make this business operational. So whatever we can do to help him.
Right. Okay, so you could help us, um, by sending in the restrictive deck drafts immediately, right? Okay, all right then. Thank you very much.
Okay, so that's it. So this couldn't, anything, any other comments?
No, anything else from commissioners? Anybody?
One banana.
Okay, so, this concludes the public hearing for July 13th at 10 a.m. We will resume at 2 p.m.
Okay, thank you everyone. See you later.
Okay, bye.